Welcome, everyone, to the special meeting of the municipality of Strathroy Caredoc on Wednesday, May twenty second. The purpose of this public meeting is to consider the stage two evaluation of the comprehensive settlement boundary review project. This is a non-statutory public meeting. It's an opportunity to present to council and the public the details of background of the proposed comprehensive settlement boundary review project stage about to evaluation and receive comments from the public and agency. Roll call. Everyone is present. Motion to accept the agenda. Councilor Alkmann, second by Councilor Brennan, all in favor. Carry. Are there any declaration of community area interest? Seeing none, I'm going to invite Director Hoff to speak first on the report.
Thank you, your worship and council. I just wanted to start tonight with a thank you to the public and their patience for this project as we had to reschedule it twice. So I know that there are a number of people here tonight and on Zoom that are eager to provide comments on the proposed boundary expansion to council. I also want to thank the municipality's consultant, WSP, as well as Watson and Associates for their work to date on this project and for their attendance here tonight. So tonight we have a few new faces. Immediately beside me is Greg Bender, and he has actually been the the project manager from the very beginning of this project and has overseen every every step of the project from behind the scenes, if you will. And then Logan Romp, who has assisted in the background of this project for about a year as well. And you will also note that the previous project, Matt Rodriguez, is not here tonight. So he's no longer with WSP, but it's been replaced with by another member, Matt Alexander, and he's unfortunately not able to make it tonight, but you will see him in future meetings. Tonight, we also have Eric Carvin, a land economist from Watson and Associate, and he is here as a resource to council in the event that there are questions about population projections. And I will also note that we did receive some communications over the last few days, so they have been collated, but they were received after the point where the agenda was posted. So those are being collected and will become part of the public record and will be circulated in advance at the next stage of the project. So at this point, I will turn it over to Greg and Logan to start the presentation.
Good evening, your worship, members of council. This is General Order Director Greg Bender from WSP along with me and Logan Romp. We're here this evening. If we could get the presentation shared, we can advance just to the sort of the intro slide. You know, as mentioned twice already, we're here to, you know, talk to you about where we are on the project, sort of how we got here, what we've heard, but also this is an opportunity to listen. We want to hear from from yourselves as well as the other stakeholders this evening, because we want feedback. Certainly, we received significant feedback to date, but this is also, as mentioned, another opportunity for us to receive feedback and see where we need to go from here. So we want to obviously share, you know, the findings that that were prepared as part of the stage evaluation matrix, which also includes, as mentioned previously, the technically preferred settlement area boundary expansion. And that also includes sort of discussion on, you know, how, what are recommended approaches to accommodate growth. So we want to talk to you about that. We want to talk to you about sort of what the land need is for the municipality, what the overall study area, the recommended area for expansion is, and again, what that what that approach is to accommodate growth, as well as to talk about next steps. So certainly lots of opportunity to ask questions, and we can certainly do our best to answer them. Next slide, please. So with that, I'll tell Logan to talk to you about sort of the project status and the engagement and the information we've received to date.
Thank you, Greg. So the Growing Together project is a multi-year project planned for the future of Strathroy Caredoc over the next twenty-five plus years. This project originally was initiated in January twenty twenty-one, and to date, there have been eight master plans and studies that have been completed as part of this project. So those include a regional commercial system study, a transportation master plan, attainable housing study, servicing capacity and constraints study, a recreational trails master plan, plant line study, parks and recreation master plan, and a fire station location study. Basically, these eight master plans and studies are intended to guide infrastructure and budget decisions, maintain or enhance overall quality of life, as well as inform new policies for the official plan, which was completed in the first phase of the project, as well as determine the long-term land need for the municipality. So the comprehensive review portion of the project, which we are currently in, was initiated in February twenty twenty-two. And the the comprehensive review basically builds on these eight master plans and studies and sort of guides growth for for the municipality. This is the first formal comprehensive review that has been undertaken in Strathroy Caredoc. Next slide, please. So why complete a comprehensive review? The comprehensive review process is a requirement of provincial and county middle six policies and plans. Under those policies, the municipality must plan to accommodate future growth by identifying a long-term supply of developable land. The municipality must also undertake a comprehensive process to state the most appropriate location for this growth. The municipality can establish appropriate phasing policies to ensure that development occurs alongside necessary infrastructure, investments, and capacity. So these include things like water, wastewater, transportation, as well as determine the appropriate mix of land uses of the future developable lands. The municipality can also set up official plan policies to guide growth and mix of housing types in new areas over the long term. It should also be noted that many other municipalities across Ontario have undertaken this process before. WSB has undertaken this similar process for other municipalities, and it is sort of the standard process which is undertaken to conduct this type of exercise. So comprehensive reviews are required by provincial policy to consider the expansion of settlement area boundaries. And some of those conditions include basically if there is enough land to accommodate, if sorry, there is not enough land to accommodate projected growth over a twenty-five year period. There is financially viable and available planned services and infrastructure suitable for the development. The expansion must comply with agricultural setback requirements, otherwise known as minimum distance separation, and impacts on agricultural areas need to be minimized and mitigated. It should also be noted that a comprehensive review also provides an opportunity to consider the redesignation of lands from one designation to another. Oh, sorry, next slide. Just so everyone is clear, a settlement area boundary is the boundary that surrounds the limits of an urban area. These areas are where growth is directed and are the built-up areas where development is concentrated. So in this map here, we have both the settlement areas of Strathroy and Mount Bridges shown. So basically, the black boundary shown around those orange, those orange areas represent the settlement area boundary. Next slide, please. So there have been proposed policy changes by the province that would essentially change the methodology for how settlement area boundary expansions are conducted. And just a few highlights as part of those proposed changes include essentially a municipality could create a new settlement area or undertake expansions to settlement area boundaries at any time, meaning it doesn't have to be undertaken as part of a municipal comprehensive review, which is a requirement under the current policy framework. It would also allow for privately initiated proposals to expand settlement area boundaries. So under the current framework, it is a municipal process that is undertaken. And in addition, it requires municipalities to consider certain conditions for expansion. So these are things like adequate servicing, impacts on agriculture. Under the current framework, those conditions are required to be met. So it introduces some flexibility in the policy language. It should be noted, though, that these proposed changes are currently not in effect. It's uncertain when these will come into effect at this time and what the final policies will actually look like when they are adopted. It is still recommended that Strathroy Caredoc proceed with the current process, essentially to ensure that we're adequately planning for the future, future growth story of the municipality, that all the appropriate conditions are met, so things like adequate servicing, impacts on agriculture, for example, and that the process is defensible and based on established evaluation criteria that was endorsed by council previously. As I noted previously, this process is standard. This process we've undertaken in other municipalities. It is sort of the gold standard approach and has been successful in other municipalities as well. Essentially, under the current framework, the same policy requirements are being addressed. It's just, this is a sort of stricter or more heightened level. So we'll still be addressing the same policy requirements under this current framework. So there's not necessarily benefit to waiting for these proposed changes to take place. Next slide, please. So just a brief overview of the comprehensive review timeline. The process was started in February twenty twenty-two, which started with the preparation stage. This included setting out notices to interested parties, receiving landowner requests, and also identifying municipal priorities. The stage one evaluation matrix was then undertaken. So this was where the study area was determined and eventually endorsed by council on April twenty twenty-three, as well as the evaluation criteria that was, that would be used to determine the the recommended expansion lands in stage two. During this period, the municipality also updated the residential land needs assessment, which was undertaken over the course of twenty twenty-two. So we're currently in the stage two evaluation matrix process right now. So that's what we'll be describing and speaking to today. And once this stage of the process is complete, we would move into the plan justification report and official plan amendment stage. So essentially, that would be the formal recommendations. There would still be opportunity to provide refinements and recommendations during that stage. This isn't the last time when any new inputs can be input. It will also be available during the next stage of the process. Next slide, please. And just a brief overview of some of the engagement events that have undertaken as part of this project. So during the official plan review stage, there is a community vision exercise, master plan studies, and official plan review. Between March and December of twenty twenty-two, the project team was looking to build project awareness and receive requests from landowners. In January twenty twenty-three, there was a special meeting of council to present the stage one evaluation matrix and the twenty twenty-two residential land needs assessment. And then in February twenty twenty-three, there were additional landowner meetings. And then in April twenty twenty-three, there is the council endorsement of the stage one evaluation matrix, which again included the study area as well as the evaluation criteria that we then used in stage two. Next slide, please. So just some general themes that we've heard so far on the project, specifically in this case for process and analysis is, has the municipality identified enough land to accommodate future residential and employment uses? How does the comprehensive review align with the master servicing plan and other Growing Together master plans and studies? Does the municipality need to plan for growth? And how is the study area evaluated? So we're looking to, we're hopefully hoping to answer these questions as we work through the rest of the presentation. Next slide, please. In addition, some of the themes that we heard related to the recommendations from the stage two evaluation matrix include, how can you plan for a diversity of housing types within expansion areas? How does the comprehensive review benefit both existing and future residents? Why is all proposed employment land shown in Strathroy? Is there enough employment land being shown? Why remain lands not included in the preliminary recommendations? And also, there were comments that were received from landowners in support of the preliminary recommendations. Next slide, please. And then just some other themes related to the next steps, which we'll answer a little bit later in the presentation. What are the next steps in the process and how are decisions made? When will the agricultural impacts and servicing be considered further? So just the the short answer to that last question there is during the plan justification report, which would be undertaken in the next next stage of the project. Next slide, please. So next, we will be looking at the overall land need for future growth, which was determined throughout this process. So this slide provides us a quick summary of the land need component identified during this process. So the municipality undertook the residential land needs assessment, which essentially identifies the required amount of residential land need, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which also identified land need requirement for parkland. And there was also the employment land study, which also determined that the municipality needed additional lands. So as part of, sorry, as an outcome of the residential land needs assessment, it was identified that one hundred and ten hectares of residential land would be required. This includes thirty-three hectares for Mount Bridges and seventy-seven hectares for Strathroy. The Parks and Recreation Master Plan identified a need of twelve hectares, which includes nine hectares for Mount Bridges and three hectares for Strathroy. And then the employment land study identified a need of fifty-eight hectares, which would be directed to Strathroy. And just as an overview of community versus employment areas, so the municipality's overall land need has been broken into two broad categories that summarize like uses into general locations. So what is a community area? It includes residential and parks and recreational facilities. So residential would include not only housing, but local infrastructure, parkland, and local serving, sorry, local serving of residential uses such as nursing homes, neighborhood commercial uses, and schools. And then the parks and recreation facilities as identified in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So what is employment area? This includes industrial logistics, office, and warehousing uses. And these were studied as part of the employment land study. Next slide, please. So some of the key considerations so far on the Growing Together project. So generally, the Growing Together project will serve as a defensible basis to plan for future growth in Strathroy Caredoc. It conforms to and reinforces the county middle six growth management policies, and it does not preclude the municipality from looking at additional lands in the future through a separate process. This is not a one-and-done process. If there is additional interest, they can be explored through a different process. And this process, once completed, will need to be reviewed in the future anyway. So there will be opportunities further down the line to make any changes if needed, or build on the work that's been done through this process. The residential land needs assessment determines how much land is required, but does not specify specific locations. It does allocate a percentage of the required land to different settlement areas, but the actual locations were determined through the stage two evaluation matrix. The residential land needs assessment also considers that two percent of growth of units are current would occur in the rural areas, which include Melbourne, Delaware West, Campbellville, and Paulie Crescent Estates. The employment land study directs future expansion of employment areas to Strathroy. It identifies that employment area expansion should occur within proximity to Highway four oh two. And it also recommends undertaking an update or review of the employment land study at regular intervals to allow for new trends in land needs forecasting. The county OP also requires this type of monitoring as well. Next, we'll cover the stage one evaluation matrix, which is completed early in the project. This was where the study area and evaluation criteria were identified. Next slide, please. Thank you. So the study area is made up of lands around Strathroy and Mount Bridges where the expansion of the municipality's settlement area boundary could occur. PNDEO comes up for their study and evaluation, which was undertaken in stage two of the project. Some of the principles that we looked at when identifying the study area were basically that the land should be within the municipality of Strathroy Caredoc. It must be contiguous with the urban settlement areas of Strathroy or Mount Bridges. It must be serviced or be capable of being serviced, or sorry, full future municipal services, and must be larger than the land required in the twenty twenty-two, identified in the twenty twenty-two residential land needs assessment and employment land study. And essentially, the reason for that is because those lands recommend a certain certain land need, and then the study area needs to be larger than that to allow for different configurations of land, or if there's constraints within the study area, you need to have sufficient land to be able to deal with some of those some of those items. So that's why the study area is larger than than the final land need that would be included in the expansion area. And the study area was endorsed by council in April twenty twenty-three. So the study areas are shown on screen here. So you can see in Strathroy, it's basically the areas to the east and the south of of the existing settlement boundaries. That orange area is where the study area is. And then in Mount Bridges, it's essentially surrounding the entire settlement area boundary. Next slide, please. In terms of the evaluation criteria that were prepared as part of the project, they had five major themes. So first being infrastructure, which essentially just means being able to service the the lands properly. Community connectivity, which would basically look to support the creation of complete communities and look at things like connectivity to the existing settlement area or connections to transportation networks, for example, and just to ensure there's no barriers between the expansion lands and the existing settlement area. There's also growth management, so ensuring that the recommended expansion area would meet the requirements of the both the residential land needs assessment and the employment land study. There's also environmental protection, so basically directing development away from natural heritage features. And then lastly, agriculture, which aims to minimize impacts on the agricultural lands within the study area. Next slide, please. So now we will cover the draft approach to accommodating growth. This is basically the outcome of the stage two evaluation matrix. Next slide, please. So there are two primary ways to accommodate growth in Strathroy Caredoc. The first includes infill development within the existing settlement area boundaries of Strathroy and Mount Bridges. And then the other option is expansion to the settlement area boundaries of Strathroy and Mount Bridges. Next slide. So the study area evaluation provides broad directions for future growth based on an understanding of opportunities and constraints. So some of the key considerations that were identified during this evaluation stage, basically that the servicing capacity and constraints study identifies opportunities and constraints in the network. So that included basically high-level, high-level constraints and opportunities. Locations and proximity to Highway four oh two, that's a both support both community and employment growth are desirable. There are existing transportation trails and parks and recreation projects that can support growth. The Trout Creek Tributary is a constraint to maturity growth in Strathroy. Growth areas should avoid high-quality soil conditions. That was one component of the agricultural impact, is the soil condition study. A more detailed agricultural operations and minimum distance separation will be included during the planning justification report stage project as well. So new development needs to be compatible with existing development and promote a range and mix of housing options in community areas. And development should be located to maximize infrastructure requirements, both hard infrastructure, like actual water wastewater servicing, and soft infrastructure, like trails or existing community facilities, for example. So this, the slide presents the technically preferred scenario, which was an outcome of the stage two evaluation matrix. These lands were identified based on a number of criteria. So considered things like whether the lands were contiguous with the existing settlement boundary, if existing servicing capacity or constraints existed, proximity to the existing, any existing infrastructure that could be used. that could be used, potential impacts on agricultural lands, so again, including the minimum distance separation and soil conditions, potential impacts on natural heritage features, as well as community connectivity, and proximity to major transportation routes, for example, Highway 402. And sort of the, the overall land needs, or sorry, area of the expansion are broken down on the slide as well. So it includes 122 hectares of community area, 58 hectares of employment area, and 13 hectares of housekeeping areas. The housekeeping items are basically corrections, administrative corrections to the existing official plan. We'll walk through those on a, on a separate slide later, but essentially, they're just administrative corrections. So the total area is 193 hectares. And of that 193, there is 171 hectares of settlement area boundary expansion for growth, and then 13 hectares for housekeeping amendments. And then there is also nine hectares of infill area, which will happen within the existing settlement area boundaries. And then this is a zoom in on the Strathroy overview. So the orange area that you see is the full study area that was identified in the Stage One Evaluation Matrix. The yellow blocks that you see are the community area blocks, and then the, the blue block is the employment area block. So in total, there's 80 hectares of community area. That includes 74 hectares of expansion lands and six hectares of infill lands. And of the 80 hectares, 77 hectares is residential and three hectares is dedicated to parks and recreation. And then there is one employment area, which is 58 hectares, which is located on the map here as well. Next slide, please. So some of the benefits to the technically preferred approach for Strathroy include primarily clusters feature development blocks into two areas, which allows for targeted expansion of future infrastructure, such as road improvements, and avoids fragmented development patterns. It addresses prior administration errors in the official plan, which are, is on one of the following slides. Provides opportunities for appropriate transition and compatibility between future community areas and the future employment area. And also considers how the proposed employment area could expand beyond this comprehensive review. Also directs employment growth to Strathroy through a land area that is appropriately sized to accommodate large scale employment uses. So some of those industrial and logistics uses sort of require a larger plot of land so that, that employment area that's currently been identified would accommodate for that. And it can also help to target economic development initiatives. It avoids areas that are more constrained by the natural heritage system, and also directs most of the future growth towards Highway 402 and locations within proximity to commercial uses. Next slide, please. And then for the Mount Bridges overview, so once again, the study area is shown in orange here, and then the community areas are shown in yellow. So there's 39 hectares of expansion area, which is shown, it's labeled M1 on this map. And then there's also three hectares of infill, which is labeled as M3 on this map, and that's within the settlement area boundary. Of this community area, 33 hectares would be used for residential, commercial uses, and nine hectares would be attributed to parks and recreation. Next slide, please. Some of the benefits for the Mount Bridges technically preferred approach is that it helps to establish a gateway into Mount Bridges along Glendon Drive. So this is the site labeled M1 as well as M2, which I believe is the existing Ford dealership, which is one of the housekeeping items that we'd be looking to correct in this process. It also allows for the introduction of new commercial uses in Mount Bridges. The specific location and delineation of commercial uses will be considered further through the planning justification report and official plan amendment as well. The technically preferred approach directs future growth towards Highway 402 and the Village Core. It provides flexibility for the municipality to determine the location of future community facilities in Mount Bridges, and it also avoids areas that are more constrained by the natural heritage system. Next slide, please. In terms of the housekeeping updates, the project team identified two housekeeping updates to the settlement boundary to correct administrative errors and/or reflect existing conditions. So the first is that site labeled M2, so this is the existing Ford dealership that is located on the south side of Glendon Drive. And this is basically just to recognize it's existing use, sorry. Essentially, it's already operating as an urban type use, so this is sort of just a formality to bring it into the settlement boundary. It's also adjacent to the proposed M1 site, and it helps to form a new gateway into Mount Bridges as well. There's also the site that's sort of on the northwest corner of Strathroy. It's currently labeled as S1B in the mapping. So these lands are currently subject to the township of Adelaide Metcalf Official Plan. There are, sorry, the development opportunities are constrained by a municipal drain and the narrow shape of the parcel. This area is not intended for development through this project. And the site adjacent to the planned future, sorry, the site adjacent to the S1A site is planned for future development in the area. So what does this mean? The comprehensive review will result in an amendment to the Strathroy, Strathroy Care Dock official plan. What this means is that the lands will be brought into the settlement area as delineated in the official plan. The municipality can establish specific policies for each area to guide the timing and nature of the development. The municipality can consider requiring additional studies or plans prior to development to ensure orderly and timely development. What this does not mean is that development can proceed without adequate full municipal servicing and necessary infrastructure, so those will be required. It does not mean that the municipality will be required to purchase the land within the expansion areas. And also does not mean that the municipality is committed to building any specific parks or recreation facilities in a specific location. And then just in terms of alignment with the master servicing plan, the master servicing plan will identify infrastructure and servicing recommendations to ensure that new urban land uses are cohesively integrated with the municipality's long-term servicing needs of the existing system. So the municipality undertook the servicing capacity and constraint study earlier in the project, which essentially identified any high level capacity constraints. And the intent of that study was basically to inform policies of the official plan, and it was done at a high level. As part of this comprehensive review project and the population forecast to 2046, the municipality has identified how much growth will occur and where. So those then feed into the master servicing plan, which is looking at a more detailed approach for addressing servicing, both existing conditions and how to serve future needs. And that's based on what we did, what we identified to the comprehensive review and the population forecast. So the comprehensive review and the master servicing plan, the recommendations sort of influence each other, so they're being completed in parallel right now. And there will be opportunity in the next phase of this project to still incorporate recommendations from the master servicing plan and vice versa. If there's any recommendations coming out of the comprehensive review project, that can also still be incorporated into the master servicing plan. Next slide, please. So just the overall benefits for this expansion, the recommended areas, and the approach to accommodating growth. The draft approach to accommodating growth responds to the community's vision, municipal strategic priorities, and technical considerations, and all feedback received to date. It advances municipal priorities for growth, development, and financial sustainability while satisfying county and provincial requirements to maintain an adequate land supply for growth and development. It reflects an infill land approach to optimize infill opportunities, which support a more compact built form. It targets a select number of strategically located community area expansions that are needed to provide a full range of housing options and types within each of Strathroy and Mount Bridges. It supports a strategic employment area expansion in Strathroy that helps to protect existing industrial parks from non-employment uses and facilitates future economic development. It also minimizes the outward expansion of the municipality's urban areas by identifying strategic locations for development within the settlement area boundary, while also trying to preserve agricultural land and natural environmental features. And then just in terms of next steps, should council endorse the draft approach to accommodate growth, the project team will proceed with the next steps in the process. So the next steps include a planning justification report and official plan amendment. These will set out specific land use policies for the expansion areas, and also plan for the range and mix of housing, which is contemplated through OPA 14. It'll determine more specific policies required for phasing and staging, which would include any additional planning or engineering studies that might be needed. It also includes a more detailed review of the minimum distance separation and agricultural impacts. And it will be presented for further public stakeholder and council consultation as part of the next stage. And then just in terms of sort of the immediate next steps, so on, we're conducting ongoing consultation with indigenous communities. As I mentioned in the last slide, there'll also be the preparation of a planning justification report and official plan amendment. And these dates are assuming that the, the approach to accommodating growth would be endorsed today, essentially. So this timeframe would obviously be pushed along if they were not endorsed. So in addition to the preparation of the planning justification report and official plan amendment, there will also be statutory public consultation, which will include a public open house and a public meeting of council. Then we would go back and make revisions to the official plan amendment, and then present that final version of the official plan amendment to council for adoption. So that concludes the presentation portion.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the, the public presentation, and we have a number of speakers who are registered here tonight, so we're gonna ask everyone to stick to five minutes to say your piece, but just to note to council, if you feel you want to ask a question of anybody who's making a presentation, you can make one question to that person. So I'm gonna stick to the five minutes, and then the clerk will call your name, if you could state your name when you come up and say what you'd like to do. There are some people who are joining us via Zoom, I believe, and there may be some unregistered people who would like to speak, and we'll let those go last. So with that, I'll turn it over to our clerk, Brandon.
Thank you, Chair. So the first registered participant we have on the list is Rob Slakers. The next registered participant we have on the list is Patty Perrin.
I'll pass for now, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Patty. The next registered participant we have on the list is Kyle Sanford.
Yeah, nothing to say, thank you.
The next registered participant we have is via Zoom, and that is Dave Henam, Zalink Apriamo. Dave, I see you on Zoom, would you like to offer comments at this time?
I certainly would. Am I coming in loud and clear? You are. Excellent. I just wanted to know if I had the ability to be off the sheer screen as well, if possible.
We're, we're not having presentations, but we are accepting verbal and written comments at this point.
No problems at all, that's fine.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Good evening, your worship, members of council. My name's Dave Henam, I'm a registered professional planner with Zalink Apriamo. We're the planning consultants for Vito Fagiha for the Southside Construction Group. We've been working the OP review since its inception and provided multiple letters to staff and to council. Our latest letter was provided in January of 2024, ahead of the deferred special meetings in January and March. I just wanted to take a few minutes to discuss some of those comments in more detail, just to give you an idea of the Southside lands. They're the owners of approximately 94 acres or 38 hectares of land immediately to the south of Strathroy, fronting onto Melbourne Road or County Road Number Nine. The subject lands generally above the southwesterly municipal boundaries of Strathroy, currently comprise agricultural, cash crop lands, wooded area, and farm accessory building. The lands are identified as Site 10 in the Stage One Evaluation Matrix, and they are within the, the Strathroy study area in the Stage Two Evaluation Matrix as well. We are, our client's very disappointed to learn upon release of the Stage Two Evaluation Matrix from WSP that the subject lands were excluded from the recommended sites to be considered for the Strathroy settlement boundary. Based on WSP's response ma- matrix, the justification for not considering these lands suitable candidate site seemed to surround the fact that they were more constrained by a natural heritage system and best favorable when compared to others from a mobility and community connectivity perspective. However, it's our opinion that it's, it's not unusual for residential lands and uses to be separated from adjoining neighborhoods and municipalities by existing natural heritage systems, such as public parks, golf courses, and the like. And this perceived constraint appears to be somewhat unreasonable and unbalanced approach for us and a potential missed opportunity for the municipality. It continues to be our professional opinion that these lands should be included with the settlement boundary. The lands have good frontage and access to surrounding roads, proximity to existing uses, and access to municipal services, and I'll touch about on that a little later. It has excellent potential for, to provide efficient and cost-effective future development. The lands at 98 acres are sized and serviced to accommodate a range of uses and built forms that would include low immediate density residential, it could include commercial if needed, with generous areas within the site available for parkland for a street network while protecting that nearby natural heritage feature. We actually went through a formal pre-consultation application some years back with municipal staff that illustrated a comprehensive plan of subdivision could be implemented on those subject lands. But I think of, of extreme importance here is to note that there's an existing main trunk sewer with connections to the existing pump station on County Road already installed in the subject lands. We believe this sets these lands apart from other candidate sites that have been potentially discounted. The sewer services, sorry, the sewer services numerous parts of the municipality was installed a number of years ago in order to save the municipality considerable amount of money in servicing costs, and it was laid out based on a preliminary road path. In addition to that main trunk sewer vertical, service connections for future residential uses were installed at the owner's considerable expense. And that was on the basis that in June of 2009, there was a bylaw approved by the municipality to authorize permanent easement and consent entered to install and maintain that trunk sewer and associated infrastructure. And in October of 2017, there was a letter of understanding entered into by the landowner and the municipality in good faith, in which the municipality acknowledged that the owner wished to pursue residential development on these lands in the future. So for these reasons, we would respectfully request that council direct staff and its consultants to reconsider the decision to exclude these lands from the list of recommended sites selected for inclusion within the Strathroy settlement boundary. Thanks very much.
Thanks for that, David. Perfect timing, I was just gonna give you the, so thank you, perfect timing.
The next registered participant we have on the list is Jerry Vishniewski. The next registered participant we have on the list is Jerry Pisznowski. Jerry, would you like to speak at this time, or Rose? No? Okay, thank you.
We'll wait till later.
Okay. The next registered participant we have on the list is Amelia Amy Sloan.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and the rest of council. I'd just like to start off by thanking council and staff for coordinating a smooth comprehensive review process to date. We feel adequate timing and sufficient notice has been provided for attendance and input at each stage of this process. That's been incorporated into the project for the last few years through the official plan review and also the comprehensive review portion of this project. My name is Amy Sloan. I'm a senior planner at Stantec Consulting. And I'm here representing my client, John Lean of Lupine Properties. In addition, we've also submitted written comments in support of the recommendations in front of council tonight. The results of the comprehensive review are rooted in sound planning principles and follow provincial and county policies. It has been determined by staff that additional lands are needed to accommodate growth in Mount Bridges to provide opportunities for a range and mix of housing in the community. Also additional commercial areas that are accessible to existing and future members of the community and additional parklands to support youth and the development of healthy communities as well as active transportation. Therefore, permitting the lands that are minutely known as 8792 Glendon Drive on the eastern limits of the current boundary of Mount Bridges to be within the settlement area boundary allows that growth to be achieved in a manner that's contiguous to the existing settlement, accessible to the village core, and also is along a major arterial roadway. We recognize that this site will still need to undergo some secondary planning to determine specific servicing concerns, further understand the impacts of surrounding agricultural lands, and determine the specifics for the location, size, and type of retail spaces, and also to allocate parks and recreational spaces in a manner that involves more public input. That said, we are confident that the issues can be reviewed within the planning horizon of 25 years and definitely look forward to any future opportunities to discuss development plans in greater detail with the municipality. We've also attached a concept to our written comments for this particular site. This is still a concept. So it is a well-thought-out concept that recognizes that environmental features will be protected. Stormwater will be facilitated on the site and adequately sized. And the required minimum distance separation between any livestock facilities and new development is also considered. This has all been done to ensure that the current operation of the neighboring farms will not negatively be impacted. So I invite you to refer to the town's own staff reports, including those of WSP and also Spreet. These show that the servicing for the site is feasible and efficient. The site has upsized sanitary available right at the lot line. It has water at the lot line, and it is also able to accommodate stormwater management in a straightforward manner. The site also has the opportunity for street connections within the existing Woods Ed subdivision just to the west of it. There have already been engineering, geotechnical, archaeological, and environmental, as well as hydrological studies done for the site, all of which support the development on John Lean's property here on Lupine Development's property. This site has also received the appropriate ministry clearances for archaeological assessments, minimum separation distance requirements for locating new residential uses, and proximity to existing livestock facilities has been considered with attempts to mitigate the impacts of potential future neighborhood concerns. That has all been made in the design concept that we've proposed for the development of this site, as well as the organization of land uses along the southwest portion, or sorry, the southeast portion of the site. All the engineering studies necessary to submit an application for a subdivision are complete. So that allows us to continue, allowing these lands within the settlement boundary just would allow us to continue looking for future development opportunities on this site. As per the WSP report, the site can expand the settlement boundary in a way that creates a square rather than an elongated manner along Main Street. So that provides access to Glendon Drive. And there's also an opportunity here to create an important gateway into the town of Mount Bridges, which also emphasizes the connection between the town and nearby 402 Highway. My client has ample experience with commercial development and intends on delivering commercial amenities that will be specifically selected to meet the needs of Mount Bridges. For example, a daycare. And he'll do this to enhance and complement the current downtown commercial node, not compete with it. He also has a firm grasp of...
Just 30 seconds, Amy.
Okay. He has a firm grasp of the distinctiveness of the two communities within Strathroy and Mount Bridges and the need for their own separate growth opportunities, which is also recognized by the WSP study. So with that, I would just like to thank you for your consideration at this meeting tonight and happy to answer any questions as needed. Thank you.
The next registered participant is Alex Brown. Okay, great, thank you. The next registered participant is Anna Spanix. Anna, would you offer any comment at this time? Okay. The next registered participant is Rob Burnett. Rob, do you have any comments at this time?
Yes. Mayor Grantham, members of council, thanks for allowing us to comment. So my name is Rob Burnett. I'm a proponent of a development submission at the northeast corner of Falcon Bridge and Adelaide Roads in Mount Bridges. But I'm not here to give you a sales pitch for a particular piece of land. What I'm here to do is to challenge you to seize the opportunity that's before you right now. I think what this plan needs is a vision. And I've made this comment in public meetings, but also in written submissions. And I think now is the time to really reiterate that and say, you know, until the council comes together and has a vision for what the potential future of the municipality is going to be, that means in terms of homes, in terms of employment lands, and in terms of growth altogether, it's very, very difficult, if not impossible, to approve any particular official plan amendment. And I really get the sense that there's a diversity of opinion amongst council members on whether to be in a high-growth or in a, let's say, status quo type of growth mode. And I think that needs to be addressed by council. Council has abdicated its responsibility to do that. You cannot turn to staff and expect them to come up with your vision for you. You need to lead that vision. And so I think that I really want to challenge council to step back from this process and have a think about where you see the municipality going. In addition to that, we talk about arenas. We talk about the need for additional infrastructure. We talk about fire halls. We talk about all these things that cost money. You have two options if you want to build all those things. You can borrow the money, or you can build some houses. And so if you want all those nice things, you have to make some tough decisions about whether you're going to grow or not. Next, I'd like to talk about what happens in the absence of that leadership and vision from council. I think what we're left with then is an incremental plan. A plan that relies on, I will say, outdated population projections based on old studies and that are not in compliance with current amendments to the provincial policy statement. And these amendments, when they're finally enacted later this year, will stipulate that we have to use Ministry of Finance data, and current data is from 2023 and hasn't been considered. There's plenty of evidence in the Altus report, which is in the appendix to this plan, that there's a vast gap between what's currently being proposed for additional lands and what is proposed with Ministry of Finance data. Whether you believe the Altus report or you believe the 2022 update to the Watson 2020 report, which is based on 2019 data, whether you believe either one of those is kind of irrelevant. The answer is probably somewhere in the middle and means that we can justify a much more aggressive approach to growth than is being taken at the moment. And in the case that we choose to do that, then this plan provides the opportunity for us to facilitate economic development, growth, facilities, all those things for this municipality. Finally, I'd like to comment on what I see as a transparency gap in this report. There is a 99-page appendix. There are multiple submissions from multiple stakeholders. Every single submission is dismissed, and dismissed with maybe a sentence or two of comment. I think council owes it to themselves to take a look at those appendices and form their own conclusions. Because by relying on basically the appendix, it gives the impression that this plan is a fait accompli and that this entire process of seeking comment from the outside is window dressing. So I think in the interest of transparency, council should review those comments in the appendix. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
The next registered participant is Helen Keenley Side. Helen, I see you on Zoom. Do you have any comments to offer at this time?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Helen. The next registered participant is Ken Peters. Ken, do you have any additional comments at this time?
I submitted written comments earlier today, which I understand are going to be distributed to the council and honestly, good bad for now.
Okay, correct. Thank you, Ken. The next registered participant is Anthony Slakers.
I'd like to delegate my comments to John Burnett.
Sure.
Members of council, thanks for putting this meeting on. And I did have numbers you to read through, a lot of the past comments, 99-page appendices, and go through, and I don't want to reiterate too much of what was said in there. There has been a lot of good comments made, and Mr. Burnett's comments, I would like to echo a lot of those, were well said. Especially with the idea of the two studies and working between the two of them. I think that council has a choice here whether to decide whether it's going to be a high-growth municipality, moving to the fore or maintain the status quo. And I think there's a significant opportunity there for Mount Bridges especially. A lot of good potential properties that can be included inside the settlement boundary. I also have some, I would like to raise some concerns I had with respect to the allocation between growth and Strathroy and Mount Bridges. I think that the potential for residential growth in community areas within Mount Bridges is understated. Given the, if you look at what's coming from Kamoka and getting pushed a little bit down the road, there could be a lot more growth in Mount Bridges, a lot more opportunity there to form a solid community, not just a bedroom community. And I'd like to make some specific comments for you about Site 18, 751 Thomas Street. My client was disappointed that those lands were not included in the settlement boundary as they thought they were, for a number of reasons, they would be really, really serve the municipality and its future growth opportunity. First and foremost is that the property is easily serviceable and can basically be gravity cut, avoiding the need for a pumping station. Just with the small level railway crossing will easily connect to the core as well as the, let's say, the gateway to Mount Bridges that has been talked about today on Glendon there. And you can easily connect the school there as well. They provided a concept plan in the comments in the 99-page appendices where they should show a good mix of medium and low-density residential. I think it would, given where the property is situated, it's also all along existing residential areas. And would almost, it's expansion of the boundary, but I would hazard to say it's almost like infill the way that it's connected to the town. There were some cons of including this property in settlement boundary, which included proximity to an active mining operation and proximity to railroad. Well, between Strath, that's timely, yeah, horn there. But between Strathroy and Mount Bridges, I think almost the entirety of both towns are within a kilometer of any railroad track. And you're gonna have development along railroad tracks no matter where you are in this municipality. Given current rolling practices, it's easy to mitigate against those effects. And it's also, it's a better area to put different mixes of uses, such as parks or infrastructure projects. The other thing was that there's an active, there's an active mining operation, which is, it's a Class B license, which means they're taking less than 20,000 tons of aggregates out there per year. This current site is operated by Falconer. And what they're doing is they're just leveling out the farmland with rolling hills of sand. And at most, 20,000 tons a year is about three or four dump trucks a day. So I don't think that's gonna have too significant of an impact on any development in the area. It's also a time-limited license application, which I can probably get more details on that from the ministry to provide to council later. And lastly, I just want to echo that my client was disappointed this property wasn't included. And respectfully requesting that council reconsider the properties being included for development and take this one into consideration. And preferably all along the lines of what Mr. Burnett said, that expanding the settlement boundary to include more properties. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next registered participant is Arturo Zararte. Arturo, do you have any comments to offer at this time?
Not at the moment, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next registered participant is Billy Joe Wilkinson. Billy Joe, I see you on Zoom. Do you have any comments at this time? Billy Joe, we can return to you. Marilyn and David Pranger are the next registered participants. Marilyn, I see you on Zoom. Do you have any comments at this time? And that brings us to the end of our registered participants, Chair.
Was there anyone who wasn't registered who wished to make comments or speak at this time? Yep, identify yourself.
Good evening to members of council. My name is Alexandra Hossen, speaking on behalf of Sipton Properties with respect to our letter submission dated January the 19th. This represents our fifth submission to date with respect to the municipality's ongoing comprehensive review of the official plan. To be respectful of the time allocation, I'll just provide an overview of the key information and requests of council from the letter through this presentation. Our revised draft of the proposed provincial planning statement was issued on April 10th by the province for review and comment. Two of the key directions of the proposed PPS is to increase housing supply and make land available for development. Specifically, Section 2.1.3 specifies that sufficient land shall be made available to accommodate a range and mix of land uses to meet projected needs for a period of at least 20 years, but not more than 30 years. The proposed PPS provides opportunity for growth beyond the current timeframe of 25 years. Sipton retained Altus early on in the comprehensive review process to assist in completing a peer review of the residential land needs assessment. By utilizing updated Ministry of Finance data for 2023, Altus forecasts the total population for Strathroy-Caredock will grow by an additional 11,500 people, translating to a need for 5,000 additional homes over the planning horizon. These figures approximately double the growth of the Watson forecast for the same time period. These updated population and housing forecasts provided by Altus translate to a total residential land needs over the planning horizon of 632 gross hectares for Strathroy-Caredock, with 304 gross hectares allocated to Mount Bridges. The Altus identified land needs for Mount Bridges is approximately nine times greater than that of the Watson forecast of 33 gross hectares. The Altus conclusions also factor in an alternate allocation of land needs between Mount Bridges and Strathroy of 47% and 53%, respectively. This is primarily due to the greater allocation of low-density development to Mount Bridges to represent past shares in the market. Over the course of 2021 to 2022, Mount Bridges accounted for 40% of low-density development. Additionally, 63% of permits to Mount Bridges over the same time period were issued, demonstrating the ability for Mount Bridges to accommodate a greater share of future growth and thereby requiring more land. In terms of employment growth, the Altus analysis concludes that a total of 217 gross hectares of land is required to accommodate forecasted growth, representing a figure five times greater compared to the Watson analysis of 42 gross hectares. To control the forces of supply and demand and in accordance with the PPS, it's important to have a mix and range of housing and competition in the market. If the market remains restricted in terms of supply, housing prices will continue to soar and erode affordability. to soar and erode affordability. The estimated average price of a single-family home in both Strathroy and Mount Bridges between 2019 and 2023 demonstrates the price pressures have been greater in Mount Bridges compared to Strathroy over the course of the last five years, with an average purchase price of just over 1 million in Mount Bridges and just shy of 600,000 in Strathroy. This highlights the supply-to-demand imbalance in Mount Bridges. Consideration of one parcel for inclusion in the Mount Bridges settlement boundary does not provide for competition or variety in the market. It is prudent that the municipality distribute opportunity for growth in Mount Bridges to provide for variety, competition, and a suitable contingency of supply. To conclude, Sipton is willing to invest in the municipality, which would assist in providing for increased competition, housing choice, supply, and ultimately should bring more attainable homes to the municipality. The current forecasting provides for an artificially low supply of new homes over the planning horizon, which reduces opportunity for supply, competition, choice, and affordability. In our opinion, it's premature to recommend properties for inclusion in the settlement boundary when projections for both employment and residential do not adequately address growth and land needs. We ask that council consider deferring the staff recommendation to continue with the final analysis of recommended areas for settlement boundary expansion until the following has occurred: consideration for growth management policies of the new PPS, and a review of the 2023 Ministry of Finance data, and update to total residential and employment land need requirements. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay.
Good evening.
Yeah, I know who you are. Would you introduce yourself?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I know we've been here before, and we are reiterating, we've heard seven times in the presentation about the importance of agriculture, and it's waiting through this next phase to be considered. With the property that's closely adjacent off of Glendon Drive, John Means' property, stormwater drainage is of concern, a system that is close and proximate to our pond that irrigates our crops. If there's, we've put a letter in requesting that there be some groundwater study to ensure that there's no salts or any of the contaminants that could come from hydrocarbons or heavy metals with that close proximity of a stormwater drainage, just on the other side, which is what he had once, he had told us verbally, was the plan. So we want to make sure that our crops are able to be irrigated. If we don't have that irrigation system, and we've gone through this before, it will completely damage our, our lands for future ginseng or tobacco, or any other crops that we plan on growing on that. So the stormwater system in close proximity to the pond is of great concern to us.
No, basically, she covered most of the way. I'm Jerry Mosky. It's just where the water flow of the water, of the water table going towards our property, that's of a concern because of what it can bring in. We've, the other, the other thing is, we keep on hearing agriculture being mentioned in the study, and I don't see, I have many concerns that we are being, going to be affected by this in the long term, and that you, council, and us are going to have to deal with all these problems that these developers are going to give us in, in the future. So I would like you guys to definitely look at everything closely, so that we're not running into problems in the future. Right now, where we're set up, it's, everything's good, and if anything, any contaminants, like Rose said, get in, get into our pond, or into our land, that affects our crops directly. I just had another thought as I was saying. And, yeah. The other concern is, is they're putting a three-acre pond at Leans' property as their stormwater drainage. Part of their idea is to put a 23-inch pipe through my property into the Arnold drain. I would also like you guys to look into that very closely, to see how much damage is going to happen to the Arnold drain, and what's going to be flowing down that property, that area, or down that ditch at that time. And you're looking at probably the best piece of land in your boundary area being used for housing. I know it's convenient, it's close to 402, you got Calum 14 sitting right there. There is a hell of a lot less productive land around Mount Bridges that can be used for development right now, and that's not just on Falcon Bridge. You got, you got other areas like on Park House everywhere else that you guys can look around as well. It just, it's incredible. I've been living in this area for many years now, all my life, and I've got a pretty good idea of what lands are good and what lands are basically shit. So thank you for your time. I wasn't prepared for all this. This is just notes as I came along here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from? Yes?
To council, Jonathan Costa. I'm the owner of Synergy Realty, you're in Strathroy. Born and raised. I think what we're hearing from a lot of members of the community is that there is a massive need for growth, and I can speak to that myself, because I'm taking buyers to outside communities, because we just don't have the availability here for new development at, at this time. So listen to what people are saying. We could definitely grow and substantially, and this council could be the ones that puts their stamp on that, while giving respect to the neighboring farmers. I guess that's everything.
Any other comments? Okay. I think we're good. All right, so now we're going to open up the floor to members of council to ask questions of the consultants or the planners. I'm sure we all have questions, and rather than ping-ponging back and forth, I'm going to ask, start by going around the horseshoe, and we'll start with Councilor Hippel. If you have anything, we can come back. I just think in terms of keeping everything, you're sitting to the right, so we can come back.
No, that makes sense. Actually, I am going to pass at the moment, because I'm still going through all my notes. So if that's okay, I'll pass to Councilor Kennis.
Councilor Kennis.
I guess my question centers around projection for population growth. You've heard it a number of times today. We've received correspondence. You know, I, I find it hard to believe that population is going to grow as much as some of the projections are, but they might. And we're looking at quite a variation in numbers, and I'm just looking, I guess, at this point for comments on, on population growth. I think population in this area grew a lot for a lot of reasons. I think COVID had something to do with it. I think migration from urban centers had something to do with it. I think immigration had something to do with it. I think inflation had something to do with it. A lot of ION numbers or letters, words involved there. And now that we're back into some sort of sense of pre-COVID operations, you know, I wonder if there is going to be as, as much growth as, as being projected. I, in the last couple of years, we've seen a slowing in housing. I, you know, I, I think people like to blame that on municipalities and red tape associated with, with that, and I really don't see that, because I think this council has approved a number of projects where the building isn't taking place. And I take exception that there aren't properties available. There are a lot of properties available in Strathroy in particular, right now that I'm aware of, that aren't selling for various reasons. So I, I guess, comments, a long-winded question, but comments on, on projected population growth and where those things are coming from.
Director Hoppe.
Thank you. Through the chair to Councilor Kennis. So we do have Eric from Watson and Associates, and maybe he can pop in and provide some background to the projections that he has completed on our behalf, as well as some comments on the Altus and the reference to Ministry of Finance numbers as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's nice to be here this evening to address questions related to growth and, and population forecasts. So yes, it's a very interesting time we've been living in over the last five years or so. You know, through COVID, and even sort of after that, you know, we saw a strong population and housing growth, especially in a lot of communities in southwest Ontario, outside of the larger urban centers. So certainly, Strathroy-Caradoc benefited tremendously from a lot of the outward growth pressure during that time. And as well, we're seeing significant immigration, you know, in Canada and also in Ontario. So there is definitely reason for optimism over the longer term as well. Having said that, we have now, since 2021, seen a slowdown in the local economy with respect to housing development activity. Over the last three years, housing development in Strathroy-Caradoc has actually been lagging below the historical 10-year average, and there's a number of reasons for this. We are certainly in a period of economic headwinds as it relates to higher interest rate environment driven by higher inflation. There's also other challenges that are impacting the development sector in terms of bringing new product online, as well as dampening a demand for, for housing, especially in, in ownership opportunities due to, due to higher interest rates. So having said that, you know, we do remain very positive in our, in our view of long-term growth potential in Strathroy-Caradoc, but we also recognize that the period of COVID, which saw record highs of development activity, that was an anomaly, and we are now back into a more sort of pre-COVID environment of more balanced growth. So as part of our assessment, we have reviewed, you know, Altus' population projections as they provided through Stage Two Evaluation Touchpoint, and we compared that against our high-growth forecast that we utilized in the Strathroy-Caradoc Residential Land Needs Assessment work, and also, which also serves as the basis for the comprehensive review and land needs work that's being presented here tonight. And we still feel that our growth forecast that we prepared in 2022, and that is now the basis for this discussion here tonight, is still appropriate and represents a robust forecast for the community, where the Strathroy-Caradoc is expected to see, you know, strong population and housing growth over the long term, and at rates much higher than what's been achieved historically. And so certainly happy to go into further discussion about this if there are further questions.
Thank you. Yep. Councilor Hippel.
Okay, so I, I have a lot of questions, but I think I'm just going to ask the one that has been bugging me from, from day one. This process has been going on for, I think, just two and a half plus years, and, and not, I mean, we started and then we kind of halted for a bit, and, and then we kept going, and then we halted for, again. And I guess, I'm looking at this now, and I know the process itself is very detailed, it's very intense, and there's just so much work to be done on it. But one of the things that I really would have liked to have seen, and still would like to see, is when we're looking at the matrix, I'm not, I would like to review what you reviewed. So I would like to see what your decision-making was based on. So I guess what I'm saying is, when, when I'm reading your, the project team responses, and, and I'm going through the matrix, and I, and I'm listening to, I've been to all of your open houses, and I've listened to the comments, and I've listened to the conversations, and I, I can't, I can't, I mean, I know what I see when I've lived in this community my whole life. I know people want growth. I know people don't want growth. We need agriculture. We need industrial. We need commercial. We, like, I, I, those things are very important, because we as a community, as a whole, we need, growth is important, as long as it's done responsibly. But I guess, how do I get to say that Joe Smith, how do I get to look at you, you and say, oh, I accept your decision? That Joe Smith can't, I'm just using Joe Smith. Hopefully, there's no Joe Smith. I'm going to accept your decision, saying that he, he is not going to be part of it. He might check all the boxes, but it's not exactly what we want. Well, I need to know what it is that you base that on. And I think that's what I would have liked to have seen moving forward. I can go through this, and I can, and agree or disagree on, on various things, and I can listen to everyone, and I can, and do all that, but at the end of the day, I don't know how you sat down in the room, like, I don't know how you did it. And that's what I need to see. I need to be able to review your thoughts, and not, not your thoughts on, on the responses, your actual thoughts, what you sat down. I need to see all the things that you're crossing off, and the things, oh, no, that's not going to work because of this. But then I need to review that, I guess. I guess that's my comment.
Okay. Did anyone wish to respond?
Through your chair to the, to the councilor. We can certainly, I don't know what else to get you that information.
And I'll just interject. You may just, you don't mind. You may find that there's a few counselors who have that question about the, let's call it the worksheet behind the, the conclusion. So I'll just help with that one. I know there's a few counselors, including myself, who have that question, the ability to see the, the actual worksheets. So just, Councilor Hippel.
I'm not, sorry. And then with respect, I'm not here to refute any of those questions. They're very valid, and we're happy to, to get you that information, so you can make your own informed decision.
That's great. Thank you.
Just to follow up, though, you've logged on to council. Are those public documents, or are those privileged documents? Because I, we're an open and transparent council, so I'll anticipate other questions if you don't mind.
If I can respond to that, there's nothing that we would have that would be private and not able to be included as an agenda item or, or discussion publicly.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Willsey.
I've got a couple of different ones. One of the ones I'm looking at, it's one of the participants I've said tonight, plus a few other peoples, looking forward at the plans going forward. There's been talk about how Mount Bridges is going to expand. I'm going to focus mostly on Mount Bridges. We've been talking, we're doing a study right now to upgrade Park House and Troops. We're talking about water capacity. We're talking about sewage capacity, water, all these things that are coming forward. And we still don't have a plan for where that growth is going to go. We've had talks about different corridors and entrance system, Mount Bridges, industrial parks of that area, just because Strathroy is landlocked, for the most part, to be within a municipality. So we don't have any of those put in here, and I agree that we really don't have a vision for where we want to go. We're just kind of piecemealing, and we're doing it one thing at a time with what looks good now. We might look back in five years and think, well, we didn't think far enough ahead. We didn't think we want an industrial area. We didn't think we want to develop this corridor. Maybe if we're going to upgrade Park House, maybe we want residential and commercial all the way down Park House to twin it with Glendon. I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there. But I don't think council has had that discussion, or we've came up with a vision where we know what we want yet. In addition, when I'm looking at some of these lands, I haven't seen anything where, with servicing costs and with how much they're going through, even when we were looking at the expressions of interest last night for the housing developments for some of our vacant land. One of those lots needed a new pumping station. Council didn't know that until we saw that report. I don't know if any of these lands need any pumping stations or massive upgrades that are going to be a drain on, on our financial lot. I don't know if that was part of the matrix. I'm just going to leave that out there. If we're going to see the matrix later, we can maybe get those answers later. And then, just looking through, there's, there's a couple of specific properties. I've got one of them. And I'm just looking at the data, and I see the data that we have in this report doesn't line up with other consultants' reports. So if we look at water and wastewater specifically, the numbers and the capacities for the sewage plants that we have in these reports don't line up with the ones we're getting from our engineering department. So we have to decide not only which population numbers we're using, but which water and wastewater numbers are we going to use, and where are we going to And where are we going to put that through? Where is the growth going to go? We can't have two different departments in the same municipality using different numbers. That, that's not going to end with a good conclusion. Finally, there's a couple of comments I'm going to make on a couple of individual parcels and just kind of how it's laid out. First, I'm going to talk about S2 and Strathroy. The issue that I see with that one is twofold. We've heard the planning department over the last six months talk about planning and everything we're working on up at Second Street and how we don't want residential right against commercial. And now we've got our future commercial employment land surrounded by residential land. So I think either one of two things should happen and this should be a discussion of council of how we do that, is whether we want to move the residential or whether we want to move the commercial. If we're going to landlock that and build residential right around it, we only, we already have issue with another employment land directly across Glengyle from there where we get complaints and we're going to build more houses right in that same area. The other part is in the plan, it talks about this being a site for a large warehouse to come with. And clearly on the map, there's train tracks that run right through it and make it two triangle-shaped pieces, which is going to make it really hard to put a large warehouse with a train track running through the middle of it. So I think we need to review that. Not sure if there's a gas line on that property or not, but that'll come when we look at the train tracks of property. And then the other property specifically I wanted to talk about was M3. With the development that we're having in Mount Bridges and with everything going up in Park House and Adelaide becoming busier and busier, I don't think we want to change the only employment or commercial area we have in the south part of the city or the town to be all, we need something there if we want to have a restaurant or anything. That's going to be a major intersection. We don't want to have a major intersection that's all houses. There's going to be no walking area and everyone is just going to get in their car and leave and they're going to go to London or somewhere else. They're not going to stay within Mount Bridges and support local. If they already have to get in their car, they're just going to keep going. So I believe, my thought is we should keep that area commercial. I'm not saying we change, I don't think we can add additional commercial for M1. I think there's more than enough for that, but I don't believe we should change M1 from commercial to residential. I'll leave it at that for now.
Okay. Any follow-up? If not, Counselor Brennan.
Thank you, Worship I A. Because some of the responses have been made so far. In terms of the worksheets that were used to rank the appropriateness of various parcels of land to be included in the urban boundary for both as employment lands and as residential, I too would like to see the rankings and, and, and the, the scoring that was used to, to make those determinations. Because I think that might give council a little bit more flexibility in our decision-making process when we come down to deciding which parcels of land should be included and not included within the urban boundaries of Strathroy and Mount Bridges. I think if that happens, then we will be able as a council to have an intelligent discussion about what our vision for the development of the two urban communities will be. And not to get too specific, but if we want to have a separation between employment lands and residential lands for future growth so that, you know, 50 years from now, we don't have employment lands being encircled by residential lands, then we need to take a look at our map. We need to take a look at where the employment lands are suggested. But I think what we need to have as well, if we're going to plan, is, is we need to know in those rankings of those parcels of lands, I mean, what were the infrastructure cost projections? Is there a way of separating residential from employment lands and still doing it in a way that gives us our best return on infrastructure development? I don't have those answers from this study at this point. And from an urban planning perspective, I don't want to just rely on experts who tell us this is the best plan without knowing what the underlying logic is. And I don't want to put an imprint of approval on a plan when I don't know what the rankings were. Maybe some other rankings of the properties, they just narrowly missed out by a small amount in one or two categories. And I didn't even know how the categories were scored. But my major concern is long-term infrastructure costs for expansion. And if we don't have our heads as a council wrapped around that, then I don't know how we can really start having a vision for what we want to do. You know, we're looking 25 years into the future, I guess, as a, you know, 25 years isn't very long. I mean, at the end of this term, I've been on council for 26 years. That's how short a time 26 years is. And 26 years is going to come and go before, you know, we blink an eye. And it could be that if we rush to approve something without understanding what's underlying the suggestions, I think it's a little premature. Something else I want to ask, and that is a question about slide 16 in the presentation, where it says, overall, the preliminary growing together findings. And it says the third bullet, do not preclude the municipality from looking at additional lands in the future through a separate process. Through the chair to our director, could you give me some detail about what that actually implies in terms of a separate process that would happen in the future if we need additional lands? Because I think that ties in maybe to population projections and our flexibility in the future as a council is what, what we do. So I'm not quite sure what that means. So through the chair to Director Huff.
Thank you. Through the chair to Counselor Brennan. So maybe to put it in a way that this is an exercise that is intended to be done at regular intervals. So this is, albeit the first time we've really done this, but the Planning Act does require us to constantly review our land supply and make sure that we have an adequate amount of land for the population projections, which really translates to many municipalities doing the same exercise every five years, starting with projections and then assessing their, their lands that are available. And if it's determined that they need new lands, then we go through this exercise again. This is not intended to be a one and done exercise. Every five years, we're going to be doing this.
So just my follow-up question would be that in terms of population projections, if we have one set of projections that are fairly robust and others that are, you know, multiple times more robust than that, it would be possible five years from now, if it turned out that the population figures that were being projected that are really, 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 you know, high, if it turns out that the trends were going in that direction, we'd be able to, if you will, make a course correction at that point. And subsequently, if, if, if we went with a projection that's A-OK right now and didn't need more land down the road, we could just stay with it? I'm just trying to think what our flexibility is in five, 10, and 15-year increments here.
Thank you. Through the chair. So yes, absolutely. And in fact, you don't have to wait five years. All of a sudden, the population goes nuts and we know that we're dropping inventory drastically. We can initiate the project sooner rather than later. The flip side to that is if you go and you go with aggressive projections, you designate a whole lot of land and we find that there's not that need, it will be very difficult to contract afterwards, which is why most municipalities try to do this in a somewhat incremental, long-term vision, but incremental basis, because there's plenty of opportunity to revisit the directions for growth and need for growth at multiple iterations.
Thank you. Counselor Paulman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, I've got a number of, of questions and points and I'm, I guess I'm first going to touch just on the point that Director Huff just made and ask a little more direct question. So obviously, we're talking about two very different population projections. What's the harm in going with the higher one?
Through the chair. To the chair, to Counsel Paulman. So, so we talked about potentially over-designated land that you don't need, but if you are substantially overestimating how much population you have in your projections, you are then required to come up with a plan for servicing those lands, which means then that we open up our development charge study and we have to come up with a plan to provide for that infrastructure and cost for that infrastructure. So development charges could be, in some cases, much higher than what they need to be if it turns out the fact that we don't get that growth. We've planned for infrastructure projects that don't actually materialize, but we're charging people. And there is always that concern about if development charges are too high, then that can actually be a disincentive for people when they're making a decision where to live. And I don't know if Eric's on the line here, Watson and Associates does a lot of development charge studies. He might be able to provide a little bit more information if he thinks I missed anything.
Yeah, no, thank you. Yeah, I think, I think the major sort of concern is that, you know, growth forecasts are important because they do help, you know, help inform how our community plans for growth. And that includes, you know, surveying this input into master service, servicing studies and other infrastructure-related requirements. And to really make sure that, you know, if you go with growth forecasts that are, you know, sort of too robust, if you know, and that growth doesn't materialize, there is a risk of overbuilding your infrastructure. And that, of course, can impact, you know, sort of the fiscal sustainability of a community, especially if that growth is, you know, just doesn't materialize as quickly as, as is expected. And so there is a need to obviously be realistic with growth projections and to utilize the best information we have at hand at the time of doing growth forecasting studies to help guide that long-term growth outlook.
Okay. Thank you. So when I was looking at the potential properties in the study area, you know, in my head, I was going through, you know, what's, what's potentially available to develop now without extensive infrastructure upgrades? And that leads me to Trug Creek and Hemming, Strathroy in on the one side of Trug Creek, when we know we just put a sizable trunk sewer line down there. And also that Carroll Street has been rebuilt and Metcalf Street is probably the most underutilized strip of road within Strathroy. I'm curious as to why the decision was made to stay on the one side of Trug Creek when I see that as, as potentially the most easily developable piece of land?
Through the chair to the counselor. So we, we established a number of criteria to try and identify general areas where it seemed reasonable to expand based on potential servicing ability and how contiguous it is to be, you know. We saw this as a bit of a barrier to having a contiguous network and neighborhood because you have to trot across the creek, creek. But I, I've said and I will say that, you know, we'll take all the feedback and, you know, certainly if we're learning stuff through this discussion, which, which we are, we can take a look at other properties.
All right. So I did ask the former director if that trunk line was, was under pressure or gravity-fed. And it is my understanding it is gravity-fed, which means it should be easily to be tied into. So in terms of having to stretch infrastructure across Trug Creek, it's already there. So I would strongly recommend that we take a good, hard look at that. And when you look at car counts, you know, we're, we're already under stress on the, I guess, the north, or sorry, this, it's hard because it's twisted, but on the Parkview side of, of the municipality, that would suggest the traffic count is a lot higher than I would say on the cemetery side. In terms of, of residential, you know, part of the reason why I was asking about the growth projections is I think that competition is healthy and I don't really want to be beholden to a single property owner, especially in Mount Bridges. You know, if, if that single property owner ran into financial difficulties or decided this wasn't the time, then now we've stalled all, all potential growth. In terms of that one piece of property, I am strongly supportive of it because that is a piece of road that we don't have to repair and, and upgrade because it's already in good condition, whereas some of the other roads around Mount Bridges would require some work to handle the stress of the extra traffic. But I do think that the more pieces of property we make available, you know, private industry will, will know for itself what, what's doable and what's not doable. And, and I think we, we would see pretty quickly which, which pieces of property get developed first and which ones will, will sit on the market for a while. And, you know, I, I, when you look at the 25-year horizon and I, I'm on the, I guess I'm on the other side of Counselor Kennes and about the growth projections. For all the years that I've sat on council, I'm going to say, Kamoka sat pretty much the same for most of that time and then just exploded. You know, Delaware is in that phase now where it's expanding again fairly rapidly and that, you know, when they, two large subdivisions of Mount Bridges happened and they said, you know, we'll be done in five years. I'm kind of like, yeah, that's funny. But they were pretty much done in five years. You know, they, they stretched it out a little bit, but, and we're seeing pieces of property that we never thought would be developed, get put into the mix. And sometimes that creates problems. So having extra land available, I think, would be a good thing. And then just to touch on industrial and commercial, the S2 property, I think, is a horrible piece of property to designate. First of all, if we're going to increase the truck traffic, you know, it's, it's, it's not anywhere near a major, a major highway. I think we should be looking at the property between Hickory Drive, McAvoy and Glengyle. The proximity to the 402 is much, much closer. We do have sewage trunk coming up, I believe, to Willow Creek Golf Course. And that stretch of Hickory to McAvoy isn't really that far. When you're comparing S2 to wherever the sewage comes to now, it's probably not that much different, but you're much closer to the 402. You're much closer to Hickory Drive and you're that much more separated from, from any residential. And in Mount Bridges, I think the piece of property, although I know he didn't really want to be included in the study, right across the road from the Cookie Factory, I think, would be a very appropriate place to put light industrial, especially if we're going to see significant growth in the Mount Bridges area, that, you know, you're going to see people want to set up, you know, 5,000 square foot workshops and stuff to, to run their businesses out of. Those are my thoughts. There wasn't really any questions in the last little bit, so I appreciate, appreciate you asking, although I'd be interested in hearing your thoughts about the property bounded by Hickory, McAvoy and Glengyle.
Director Huff?
Yeah. And through your chair, the counselor. We can certainly take a look at that. Again, this, the whole point of this is to, to receive feedback so we can, we can take a look at that and see if it makes sense. Certainly provide the details so we know what we were thinking when we came to the decision.
Counselor Gervishire.
Thank you. I've got one kind of question, comment, and, and then I, I'd just like to go through a little bit of something here. My, I don't feel like I want to move forward at all with anything until we see an agricultural review done. Like, we have waited a long time. It's got to be getting close to somewhere to where we can satisfy some of these people, you know, who, who need to see that before we get to the final stages. So that, that's, that's where I am at that point on that one. Obviously, you've already said it's going to come later, but I, to me, I'd like to see it sooner rather than later. And then I'll move on to kind of what I took out of this whole thing is this line that says, you know, what does this do for the municipality? And it says, "The municipality can establish specific policies for each area to guide the timing and nature of the development." To me, that says, put in some Hickory. To me, that says, put in some acreage, you control how this is done. So instead of letting one person win the lottery, which is what this is, really in Mount Bridges, one person won the lottery and the rest sit, and you hope in five more years, you're the next lottery winner. I, I, I look at it somewhat like quota, and I, I'm just going to take it back to a farming analogy here where supply and demand and quota, right? I'm not controlling the quota, you are. You're telling me how much quota I should have, right? I think as a council, we should say, we want to own this much quota, and this is what we're willing to put into this. Like, instead of being told you will only have this much land, I think we should decide we want this much land and, and go from there. I know we're going to work on, you know, I've heard the, the population growth, the this, the that. I don't really, those numbers are going to change probably yearly, you know? As far as I'm concerned, when I looked at the square outlines of both cities, whatever they call those, the poo mustard yellow boxes, put it all in. Like, really, that's what I look, I know we talk about, oh, we have to service this and service that, but this line here says, "The municipality can establish specific policies for each area." So why not, instead of doing this performance, which really this is what it is, this is a drug-out performance that nobody really is overly happy about doing every five years or whenever, put in enough that looks like 25 years? And then if you need to review it, which is somebody look at it and say, well, geez, maybe we shouldn't be heading this way because the water's too deeper, Lord only knows what it is. To me, the more you put in, the less, if we, if we don't have competition for that one lucky spot, so that one lucky spot goes from $100,000 an acre now, maybe it's only $15,000 an acre. So maybe that lot goes from $400,000 to $150,000. Now we're getting back to more obtainable housing. Like, there's a way to do this, the problem is, the way I see it, and it, and it's going to sound bad from where I'm sitting, but we don't mind houses selling for 1.2 million and having a tax rate attached to that because it's more money for us. But on the other side of it, we sit here and we have people say, I can't afford the 1.2 million dollar house, I can't afford the $400,000 house, right? But we are essentially, with this process that we're doing right now, we are driving that higher, higher and higher. With every time we only put in 333 hectares, you know, we're pushing that higher. So to me, that's where I sit. I, I really, I don't, I don't, I don't want to say I don't care about the population numbers, but I don't. Pick some acres, put them in, be done with this, you know? Like, this, this process is, is, you know, your employment acres in Strathroy, that is a turkey farm that you're putting those employment acres on. A turkey farm. How do we do that? So to me, this whole process is just flawed. So to me, let us pick some acres, we'll put them in, we'll send it back, we'll send it up to whoever needs to review it, process it, boom, there we go, we're done. If they send it back and say, you guys are wrong, then we're wrong, we'll cut some acres or add some. Let us do it. I know where I live, I know what I should be doing. That's really all I got to say.
Thanks councillor. Councillor Paver.
Thank you for that councillor Derbyshire, I would agree, you know, when I see how little is being added in, I would agree with that we're, could be contributing to driving up prices and value, which is something that we talked a lot about in the community. I don't think I have much new to add to the conversation, I felt the same way about the S2 in Strathroy, I think that looks really odd. No one wants housing development near industrial or employment lands, we've got lots of space. I think that we could do a better planning there, I think that in the future we would come to regret that. I'll have to ask councillor Derbyshire about the turkey farm, but anyway.
It's there.
It's there.
It's here for my voice.
And then my other question was, why did we have no employment lands in Mount Bridges?
Director Huff.
Thank you, through the chair. The, the decision on employment lands had to do with really wanting to, or knowing that employment lands tend to like to be located in locations that are more fully serviced and have other areas of employment lands. So the notion of just creating a new employment node in Mount Bridges was considered and the comparison of whether it was that or establish something that is in proximity to an existing employment node in Strathroy. In our mind, the Glengow provided an easy access through McAvoy to the 401, and so the decision was, or the thought was, that that would be a more appropriate location.
Do you follow, councillor?
Just, you know, I'm not a planner, but as I drive through a lot of small communities, I'm just thinking, I was in Lukin recently, it seems like more and more of these small communities are adding these areas. And maybe that's something in terms of thinking of the future of Mount Bridges, we want to think about creating some space where we could have some sort of employment land there for, if we have a growing community, those people could be looking for employment too. So, and maybe they would like to work in their community instead of community somewhere or opening up a business in their home community. So, yeah, personally, I would like to see, I would think that it might be wise to add a little bit in Mount Bridges.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Your Worship. I think my thunder has been stolen, I'm, I'm so disappointed after reading all of these reports and papers and, but I, I echo everything that everybody, all my fellow councillors have said because you've, you've hit it right on the mark, and I'm very encouraged hearing all of the comments. I, I will repeat the Trout Creek restriction on growth to the east of Strathroy, I don't understand, and I, I would like more information on that if, if that remains in the evaluation matrix as a reason not to go that direction, I, that would have to be explained more fully to me. Quite honestly, people and communities build around waterways all the time, and this is a relatively small one, but this is where parks and trails in Strathroy exist and same in a number of other communities, so I'll leave that there. The residential land needs analysis, lots of information on it, both the report from Watson, I have a, a report from Sifton, I have a report from Altus, I have a report from the county. Some are the same, many are different. I would say that, it's my understanding that Watson has used a 2016 census data, 2021 census is the most recent, so if we're going to use census data, it seems that we're already five years out of date, that concerns me. I am also concerned to, to have some documents in front of me reading about the new provincial planning statement that may, and I know we've had a number of iterations of provincial policy statements and now provincial planning statement, none of which have been enacted yet, but it does, I do have literature in front of me saying that we will have to use the Ministry of Finance provincial numbers, and that, that's coming forthwith from the government. So I'm, I'm concerned because that changes everything from our residential land needs analysis, although I do agree with councillor Derbyshire on many of his statements, that it may not serve the purpose, that, that anchor that, that we're using it for. As with most of my fellow councillors, certainly councillor Brennan said it very well, the evaluation matrix on the properties that, I see it in the documents, it's been subjectively done, which is always difficult to appraise, but it's only been given to us for the properties which have been recommended to come into the plan. I, I simply can't make a decision until I have all of that information in front of me for everything that would be contiguous to the two communities, which really is the criteria that council had set forth back in April of '23. I will say, Your Worship, that I think we have so many pieces of information in front of us, and I think it's important that we, we receive and consider all of this information, regardless whether we've commissioned the report or not. You know, Altus Group, we, we did not commission that report, but it is a professional group, I've researched them on the internet, as maybe some other people have. So I think disregarding that type of information does not do us well, and since we are supposed to make informed decisions, we should take all of the information that is available, especially if it's from credible sources, and consider it, and then do with it what we want from there. One thing I'll say, my, my final point, Your Worship, is, you know, we, communities are alive and we do not control their growth in isolation. Other people purchase properties, make business decisions, bring industry to, to the community outside of our decisions. Our neighbors have growth plans and studies outside of our decisions, and I'm, in this regard, I'm referencing Glendon Drive and Middlesex Center. They are clearly using Glendon Drive as a main artery for commercial and residential. To stop at our border does not do us justice, and quite honestly, does not do our community justice. However that looks coming into our community in Mount Bridges, it's already been decided by our neighbors and the people are using it for that purpose. We don't control that. It's our job to receive that, understand it, and strategically nurse that growth in a responsible manner, and, and then that just takes in everything that everybody else has said with the infrastructure and the costs and all of those plans, so I'll leave it there, but great conversation, really encouraged from my councillors.
Thank you. I have no questions other than a comment, I haven't seen, see a year and a half, our council be this vociferous, this vocal and appear to be some agreement that we're unsure as to what to do, so I'm going to seek council's input because I, I think it would be who was to defer this until a later date, because when I read the, the motions, I don't think council, this is just my opinion, would be prepared to talk. Councillor Palkman, I need some wordsmithing.
Yeah, I guess maybe before we go there, one thought that I had is, I would like to see the difference of what lands be recommended at the two population growths. I think that might be an interesting exercise to see what kind of difference that would make.
Well. Yep. Deputy Mayor.
So I have the Altus report in front of me.
No, I, I mean applying it to the, to the individual pieces of properties, what, what would that?
Oh, I, I see what you mean, okay, because, I mean, inside that it, it says how many hectares they think should come in. So maybe we need to take a balanced approach, maybe, but I, I think disregarding any, any information does not serve us well.
I think my, my point is, council and councillors, that when I read the motions that were recommended in front of us, I don't feel there's a unanimity to proceed when you read the motions, so I was looking at how it from council to wordsmith. Deputy Mayor.
It may take a number of us to come up with the motions, but I'll, I'll start off with some thoughts. So first of all, defer or refer, let's say, refer this back to staff and our consultants for the consideration of the comments this evening that we've heard both from, and primarily from council, because now it's really our turn, we're kicking in. So I'd like, we've, we've all asked for staff, I'd like to see that come back. I'm not sure how to deal with the provincial planning statement. My best information is that by the end of the summer, something's coming up, and it may set the numbers that we have to use for the residential land needs analysis. The reality is, if we refer it back to staff, it's probably not coming back before Labor Day anyways, and Labor Day seems to be the time that it's being suggested to me that a decision will, will be made by the provincial government. So do we just refer this back to staff and let them do their thing? Or do we wait for the provincial planning statement to be announced because it will drive this?
Good, I'm asking for council's input, so this is, good councillor Brennan.
Something that might be helpful, might be useful, is we, we have the, the comprehensive review project maps in Acge tonight that we've seen, and they're based on one set of population projections. I think it would be very interesting to ask our consultant to come up with a, a second set of maps that would be based on the Ministry of Finance population projections. I'd like to see the delta, I'd like to see the difference between what's being proposed based on one set of population numbers tonight, and I'd like to see what would be recommended if we were using the other set of numbers from the Ministry of Finance, which we may end up having to do anyway. But in addition to that, I'd also like to see the, the scoring process, the worksheet for the rankings of the various properties in the urban settlement barrier, and then that might give council some opportunity to impose a vision on the process that would take information from both maps and maybe take a look at separation of employment lands from residential or, you know, looking at, you know, going into the southeast section of Strathroy or something like that. But I would like to see two different maps, one based on the current population figures, one based on the Ministry of Finance, and I'd also like to have some feedback on, you know, rankings and the worksheet, and then that puts Strathroy in the council, Strathroy Carradoc Council, in the driver's seat to make some informed decisions where we can then attempt to come up with our vision of the way we want to see the urban boundaries and progress over the next 25 or 30 years. I'd like to see something like that, which probably means that we're, and I don't know if we receive for information, the, the report tonight, or if we defer that, that's other stuff, but what I'd like to see is the differences between what's being proposed now and what would be proposed if we had to use the Ministry of Finance figures, and I'd like to see what the worksheets are for the ranking, and, and, and that gives us an opportunity to do some real decision-making as a council.
Yeah, any other, we're going councillor Wilson.
Sorry.
Sorry, go ahead. Sorry.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, I just wanted to provide a couple notes of clarification as well. So I know that a, a number of council has mentioned Ministry of Finance numbers. So first, I wonder if Eric could come on and speak to council just about what actually the Ministry of Finance numbers are, what they include, and what they could provide or might not be able to provide.
Yes, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So Ministry of Finance population projections, which are the basis for Altus's growth forecast for, for Strathroy Carradoc, they're basically based on the census division level, which is Middlesex, London, so this is a large geographic area. Strathroy Carradoc, as a share of the total population currently, represents less than 5% of this, of this total, so it is highly sort of dominated, if you will, by, by London, City of London and its surrounding communities. And so Altus's growth projections are basically an extrapolation of that census division level work coming from the province. And so essentially what they've done is, is looked at the growth for the census division level and basically assumed an equivalent share of growth being accommodated in Strathroy Carradoc. And so that's the basis for the analysis. So just wanted to be clear that these Ministry of Finance population projections are at a much higher level of geography than Strathroy Carradoc. We are not expecting through the PPS to have any area municipal population projections, meaning that they will be provided at the census division level only. And what's important is that they are projections that consultants such as ourselves and Altus need to consider as reference points and starting points when doing growth forecasting at, at an area municipal level, but really they cannot replace the more rigorous- But really, they cannot replace the more rigorous local area growth forecasting work that's done by firms like us. And so it's important in this discussion that even with a new PPS, these Ministry of Finance population projections are just the starting point in the conversation of looking at growth. And that, and that's really important in this discussion when looking at local area municipal growth potential.
Thank you. Counselor Willsey.
I'd lost my train. I thought about where I was at, and I've got another comment I want to make in addition to what I was going to say before.
Okay.
We're not, a lot of people are focusing on the Ministry of Finance numbers. I'm in agreement with Counselor Dervishire that their projections, whether they're off or not, they're still way higher than where we're at. If we look at the Middlesex County projections that came out last year, they're more than double what we are. So we can look at any number of reports and we're always the lowest one. And I, really with them being all over the place, I think we should definitely still have more than one landowner anyways because competition is great. Everyone loves competition because that's what keeps prices down and keeps houses affordable. And we're not tied to one person. I think we should bring in multiple landowners. The other part that I think we as a council should do is two parts. When we bring back the other map that Counselor Brennan just discussed, I'd like to see our comments put into the current projection calculations. So we've, a number of counselors said they don't like the S2 property. We've talked about location of land. I think we should, if we're going to get a new map for the higher projections, we should also get a new map taking into our comments for the lower projections as well, so that they're both on an even playing field. One of them's not disadvantaged. The other part is I believe council as a whole, we should talk about industrial employment lands, where they're going to go. If we put these lands forward and we surround our new industrial lands and we decide, hey, we want to put industrial land here, but then we build our housing right there too. We can't have them both in the same spot. We need to be able to give some direction. We need to think about what we want. And we need to think about what we want the future of this municipality to be. And I'm not sure the council is there quite yet, but the discussions have started. And I think that's an important piece of this too. We, I don't think we can move forward until we've got both of those pieces figured out.
Thanks, Counselor. Both Counselor Dervishire and Counselor Paulman.
Thanks. So through you to, I'm going to say the director. If we put in any land that right now, or any one of the projects, or pieces of applications that can be serviced with the servicing that's available now, so that would eliminate anything that's kind of out in the country or doesn't actually border the town. If we put that in and propose that and send it off to whoever approves it at this point, what are we looking at? Like, what are they going to come back with and say? No, you didn't use the population numbers, so we deny this? Or you need to move it down to this many acres or? Like, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is what is the game plan in the end for the process of, you know, like, we're all using these population numbers to try to base off a land area. But what if we just picked land area and said, we think, because obviously your predictions for the last five years, you had no idea what was going on, right? Not you guys, but in general. I mean, our population exploded everywhere. So nobody predicted that. So we're going to kind of make our own decision and say, we think we can service this, 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 and this. And we think in the next 25 years, this is what's going to happen in our municipality. And we submit it to the province and say, here you go. What's the repercussions for doing something like that?
Director Hop.
Yep. Thank you, Chair, to Counselor Dervishire. So the process for a boundary expansion is that we receive direction locally from council. An official plan amendment is brought back. That's voted on, like every other official plan amendment, that goes to the county of Middlesex. And the county of Middlesex, as our approval authority, needs to assess whether or not the proposal is in, is consistent with the provincial policy statement or planning statement, whatever it may be, and conforms to the county official plan. And then they make a decision. And so they're able to deny, modify, or approve at that point in time. And of course, in the, I will say, in the production of an official plan amendment locally, certainly, direction of council will decide what that looks like. But in terms of, you would want a planning justification report completed. And that would need to be done by a professional planning firm. And so they would have to assess whether or not the recommendation would be something that they could recommend themselves professionally as being something, again, their test. Their obligations are to make recommendations that are consistent with provincial policy statement, conforms to the official plan of the county, and conforms to our own official plan. So if you presumably have a planning justification report prepared by a planner, you'd want one that they'd be able to endorse.
So essentially, you then should just, or they should supply us with all the information that we need to make our decision. We then will kick it back to them and say, here's what we want to do. They'll either say, we endorse this or we don't. Go back and figure it out, right? But just so I get this clear, like, what's being kind of given to us now is, here's what we think you should do. I guess that's where we're, I shouldn't speak for all of council. That's where I feel like I'm at, where I'm like, I've just sat through a bunch of stuff to be told, here's what to do and, you know, give your endorsement on it. You know, and I feel like that's the sound that's being kind of put around here by council. So to me, if it were up to me, I would say, just give us the resources, lock us in a room, we'll come up with something, and then we'll send her back out to you. That's, that's how I would go about this process. I think it's our decision, it's our thing, so we should come up with it.
Any comment, Director?
So through the chair to Counselor Dervishire. I understand. We have gone through this process. The intent was for us and the consultants to do a lot of the heavy lifting, to do the projections, to do all of the background work that is required to be done in order to meet the policies that are in place provincially and locally and present something to you. The intent of tonight was a check-in. Are we in the right, are we in the right place? Let's get your feedback. If we're not, then we can come back and do some homework. What I will say though is, you know, the process was intended to be iterative in the sense that we started right after you got elected. You were the lucky counselors that got to start a boundary review immediately upon your election, which fantastic. And so really, we tried to start with, you know, providing that first blush. This is, this is the project. We provided some background information and it was a lot of material. We had some open houses back in January of 2023. And we talked about how important that evaluation criteria and study area was for us in order to complete that project. We needed some guidance on the things that we were to look for. And then we, and really the criteria that we've taught, that I've heard being talked about around the horseshoe. You know, we evaluated the study area based on the criteria that was endorsed by council. So we didn't individually provide scores. There's no numbers attached to each of the, of the projects because that wasn't part of the evaluation criteria that was endorsed by council. So what we have done is we've provided you with the results of that evaluation. We can certainly provide that, some subjective information on how we evaluated the properties. But that wasn't within the scope of the original project as we went by piece by piece. So depending on exactly the direction of council tonight, there might be some elements that are beyond the scope and we'll have to talk about the team of what that additional work is. But I hope I provided a little bit of context there to why we are here today.
Okay, I just, I know council was speaking, I think, and by the word, Director. Lucky was your word, wasn't my word, by the way. Just want to throw that out there. But I just, this continues to remain in council's court, right? This is still with the council. So if we were to refer, defer, whichever word we want to do, it's still within council's court. So until we do and make our recommendation or motion, we don't need to have another public meeting or that. So we count, council can still, for lack of a better word, control this, correct? If we want to have another meeting?
Absolutely. It's within your control. There are requirements for statutory open houses and public meetings so that the public, it's an open and transparent process. So the public does know the decisions and the framework that was, that was used to make those decisions.
I'll apologize if you go. I think Deputy Mayor, you can help put something to this.
Yeah, so I think, pardon me, I think we're looking at a motion to refer this back to staff for them to provide us with the evaluation matrices, whatever information they have, on all of the properties considered, which were contiguous to the two urban boundaries, Strathroy and Mount Bridges.
And can I just add?
Yep.
And they should have enough to, also all the comments they've heard from, we don't need to include all of those in. I think I saw some furious writing, include all the comments and come back and recommendations.
So then we're looking for, I think in my earlier comment, in your regards here, and furthermore, that staff provide comment in regards to what we heard from the public and from council this evening.
Sorry, Counselor Paulman.
Thank you. As part of that recommendation, I think one of the things I would like to see happen is that the properties be ranked in terms of municipal cost. So for instance, when I'm looking at the properties on the, the north, that always screws me up, on the Parkview side of Strathroy, you know, we're a fair long ways for any stormwater to have an outlet. Whereas on the Choke Creek side, there's stormwater outlet fairly close. And while I know growth is supposed to pay for growth, you know, just in the past little while, we spent a few million dollars on Queen Street and a stormwater sewer to go across Walmart, Canadian Tire. That, while growth is paying for growth, that we're having to do that work. And so if they could just, even in a low, medium, and high cost ranking, say, this is what we suspect the municipality is going to have to spend because I think, given what we need to spend in the short term, some good cheap wins would be highly advisable to add to the tax base quickly without spending a lot of money. And the other thing that I, the point that I want to make is that as much as I know the higher population study encompasses London, you know, two and a half years ago, I used Synergy Realty Services and all the people I were competing with to buy a house were from London, I believe. Is that correct, Jackman?
Yes, sir. Did you, didn't we?
And does that continue to be the case?
We are definitely feeder community. We're getting them from all, all those.
So while I know that's anecdotal, that's real life experience that's, that's happening today and probably for a while because we know London is going up. We won't have the ability to go up. But those people who live in the towers that are going to be building London are going to some point be moving out to look at townhouses and single family homes, so.
All right. Just, we want to bring the motion. So unless you have something to add to the motion. Can you add something to the motion, Counselor Willsey? Okay, so did you, were you able to pull something together?
Actually, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Greg.
For adding to the motion, I'm wondering if, because of lands that we have to put in, we don't actually know, we know the criteria, but not how they're ranked. I'm thinking if the criteria is fluid, maybe we should put in the motion that we can adjust the criteria to be favorable to council's decisions where we talk about municipal feeding costs or contiguous to the border. And maybe the, what we put together two years ago isn't exactly what fits with the property we're looking at. So maybe we should also take a look at the criteria that we're ranking them on. And for, to, yeah, to align that with council priorities.
So you're lucky you get to read this back to us.
That was a good idea.
Great. Thank you, Chair. Through the chair to members. So as I've been listening, I've just written down a variety of clauses. So I'll go through them one by one and you can certainly massage or adjust based on what your intent was. So the first is that report, BBP 2024-53, be referred back to staff and the consultants for consideration of the comments made by council and the public. Further, that the report include the future considerations of the provincial policy statement? Is that something they want included?
Provincial planning statement, I think is probably what it would be. That's what we're anticipating.
Is that the criteria we have to meet? Is that what's anticipated?
If they ever enact it.
Okay. Sorry, I meant the criteria that we have to follow to be right. You know what I mean? So like you guys say, we have to follow this criteria and that criteria and that. I'd like to know exactly what that criteria is if we're, if we're making a decision.
So would we all.
So the next clause, which show it could be adjusted based on some of the additional feedback we heard. The next proposal was that a set of maps be produced based upon the Ministry of Finance population projections. Further, that another set of maps be produced incorporating council's preferences regarding the proposed community areas and employment areas. Further, that the evaluation criteria and matrix be provided to council. Further, sorry, Counselor Willsey?
Put that one for review because we may be changing that one.
Pardon me?
It's what is it? Yeah. I just, do we want to put that, that we wanted to council for review or are we just reviewing it anyways?
We can do whatever we want with it. We just want their information.
We just want the information, Greg.
We want to see their information, right?
So the next request I heard was that the properties be ranked in terms of municipalities' costs. And finally, sorry, that the evaluation criteria be adjusted to match council's priorities.
Okay. Any comment, sir? Counselor Brennan.
Not to add to the motion, but I think the spirit of the motion is that council wants to see what their options are.
Yes.
And I think it has become pretty standard that when we get something in front of council, there's an option one, two, three, four. I don't think we're asking for anything that formal, but I think council wants to see what their options are and have an informed way of then trying to come up with a vision that is in the best interest of this community based upon our priorities. I think that's the spirit of the motion, and I think you're capturing it with a lot of technical stuff there.
Through the chair, Counselor Brennan, if members wish, we can certainly add a final clause that council be provided with this information as a means to determine options in the best interest of the community.
Make the motion.
I do. Director Hop was raising her hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. See, I did get up down there.
I think it's appropriate.
Thank you, Chair. So what I understand is from the resolution, so council wants the consulting team to evaluate every single property within the study area to, and we would have to come back and get endorsement of a revised ranking system before we undertake that. I anticipate that that would be outside of the existing scope of the project. So we would come back with a work plan and a budget for that additional work.
Counselor Willsey.
I think that's a whole lot more complicated than what we actually asked for. I think we asked for, whether it can be high, medium, or low for municipal cost and for the criteria that was already used as I believe what we were asking for. I don't believe it's nearly as detailed as you just made it to be.
Oh, we can discuss that offline as to what happens. It's in the motion. Anything else? Okay. Go ahead.
Hold on. If they're, I know we want to discuss it offline, but if they're just going to come back with a report that says, in order to do what you guys have asked, we need another $80,000, then the discussion offline isn't going to do us any good. We're going to be back here with them asking for more money to complete a report. I think we're, we better maybe actually be clear in what we are asking for at this point. Otherwise, we're going to, they're going to come back asking for more money.
Deputy Mayor?
The motion I want to make is to receive all of the information that they have compiled through their evaluation matrix on all of the properties that are contiguous to the two urban zones currently, that being Strathroyd and Mount Bridges. I want to see that information. What we do with it from there, I don't know. So the concept of new evaluation criteria, I don't think needs to be in my motion. We may do something down that line. I don't know. But right now, it's receiving some information so that we can see things and start to evaluate it at this council. I think ultimately, we're going to want to do our own evaluation.
Through the Chair to members, then, do we wish to remove the reference to adjusting the evaluation criteria at this time?
Yeah, I, I would, I would remove that from my motion, and then we'll see how council.
We can rank that ourselves. And then ask for.
We could ask for it after the fact.
I agree.
Sorry. Yep.
Through you to the Director. Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to ask the Director in a simple, low, medium, and a high for those properties that have already been recommended. Is that a possibility?
Through the Chair. So certainly, we did take into consideration servicing availability and potential already. So we can translate that, those words that we used into a low, medium, and high, if, if you would like, for sure.
Just for simplistic, yeah.
Thing cost.
Yep, and, and no additional.
No additional charge for this?
All right, you got to agree with Counselor Durbashire. Okay. All right, let's move on. Pardon me? I'll second the motion. Do you want to read the motion again, Brands, and we'll take it to a vote?
Certainly. Thank you, Chair. So the motion moved by Deputy Mayor McGuire, seconded by Mayor McQuaid, is that report BBP 2024-53 be referred back to staff and the consultants for consideration of the comments made by council and the public? Further, that the report include the future considerations of the provincial planning statement? Further, that a set of maps be produced based upon the Ministry of Finance population projections? Further, that another set of maps be produced incorporating council's preferences regarding the proposed community areas and employment areas? And further, that the evaluation criteria and matrix be provided to council? And further, that the properties be ranked in terms of the municipality's cost? And further, that council be provided with this information as a means to determine options in the best interest of the community?
Have a second motion, all in favor? Yep, sorry.
Sorry, one, one thing. I, the agricultural thing has come up a number of times tonight. I wonder if, you know, if, if there could be some, something provided to us on that aspect the next time we meet as well. Because it seems, it, it, it doesn't sound like we're going to progress off this point until we, until we see that as well, so.
For, for the properties that we've already looked like that, they've already given us a matrix, the agricultural aspect of that was contained in that evaluation matrix. You've already considered it for the properties that you've recommended?
I don't think so.
This evening. Is that correct? It was part of your, your evaluation?
To a certain extent, we have, but we haven't actually completed all of the mapping exercises or a full AIA. So there are some additional elements that need to be done.
Okay.
And that will take some time before it can be brought back to council.
Yeah, we got to.
I'm, I'm the same question.
Is that what the councillor wanted?
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I know it's, I, while we're talking here, I, I, I'm a little, you know, I'm not sure what I am right now. I, I, I don't think we're going to get through this by the time this term of council is over, I, I, the way we're moving now. So, so anything that we can do to
Speed it up.
Speed it up, I think would be good, so, so. But otherwise, we're, you know, I won't be at the table making the decision, so.
Yes, Counselor Hippo.
Sorry, I have one question, because you said this is going to take a very long time. And, and I'm looking at, and I'm listening. So I'm looking at Director Huff. Five years. We're supposed to be doing this every five years, right? This process, it's very possible, as Counselor Kennis said, we're not going to get through this for quite, for a lo, a while. So are we going to finish this process and then boom, we have to start this all over again? Is, I guess I am asking you that, because I mean, I very well may not be here either. So I do need to know that, like, if this process takes us like four years, and then within that next year, we got to start this all over again. I just, I'd be very interested if that's kind of how that works really quickly, if you could. Sorry.
Unfortunately, the short answer is yes. With these expansion requests, that's very possible. I will, I will say changes to the provincial planning statement. So the way this has gone in the past, for the last 20 years, is the only time expansions happen is if the municipality does a project like this. The potential changes by the province are saying that any landowner, you know, could potentially make an application. And so it's not as constrained of a process. So, you know, I think that might provide some additional flexibility.
Okay, council, we have to, as we go around, Counselor Pellicle, one more.
I was just going to say, in concerns of the amount of time this has taken, the last time we had a major urban boundary change for Strathroyd was in the 1980s, when we absorbed the industrial area within the urban boundary. So if it takes a little longer to do it properly, so be it, because it hasn't been done in eons. And it's, it's just going to take time and, and conversation and, and yeah, and yeah, and probably money. In terms of Mount Bridges, I, I don't even know when the last time the urban boundary was, was changed at Mount Bridges, but a lot longer than what Strathroyd was anyways.
I am very okay with that. I just wanted to ask the question, because I think people need to know is we're going to take as long as we need to take, because it's important for every person in this room and every person in the municipality. But I just want people to know, because I have had that question asked several times, if, are we going to finish it and then turn around and change it again? It does need to be asked, that's why.
That's fine. Okay, we have a second motion in front of us. Let's bring it to a vote.
You had a councillor potentially proposing a friendly amendment.
He didn't bring a friendly amendment, but if he wants to, he can.
Well, I, I don't know if you consider that, and I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's a big issue or not. I, I just thought we should put it out there, because it has been raised a few times tonight, so.
I don't think they can do it.
Here you are. All in favor of the motion? Go with it. Danny? Carrie?
We can do it real fast. We do it my way.
There it is. Still, still on here, still on here, council?
Oh, sorry.
Yep. So the next meeting, scheduled meetings is Monday, June 3rd. Mark, do we still need to bring this to a bylaw? Okay, thank you. Give it to you.
Thank you, Chair. The only bylaw for consideration this evening is bylaw number 5424, which confirms the proceedings of this evening's special meeting of council for the date of May 22nd, 2024. Recommendation is that bylaw 5424 be seen for second, a third, and final reading.
Okay. Someone to bring to motion. Counselor Pellicle, same way, Counselor Kennis. All in favor? Carrie?
I mean, we've had 54 meetings.
Yep. Just remind council, we do have a special meeting on Monday night. Yes.
Are they special if we have them all the time?
Counselor, here, there, they're always special. Motion to adjourn at 8:35. Deputy Mayor, same way, Counselor Kennis. All in favor? Carrie? I'd like to thank the gallery for your patience and your input tonight, and for you were here.